Come on, meeting in order, please. We have with us this evening Pastor Bob Vineyard from Greenway Fellowship Church to deliver an invocation.
Shall we pray?
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of your Son, the Lord Jesus. We ask you, Father, that you will bless this gathering. Lord, that you would give wisdom and direction and give these that are assembled here, Lord, our elected representatives, Lord, to help them as they steward the revenue that is entrusted into their care. We ask you, Fathers, to protect our law enforcement officers and all our firefighters. And, Lord, just help us to live in peace and tranquility. Again, I ask you, Father, to give them wisdom, and may they be wise stewards. In the name of Jesus, our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
I have no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
DeHaven, second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Consent agenda. I'd offer the following tabs, Mr. Chairman. Tabs E and J. E is the Parks and Recreation Commission Report, and J are the road resolutions for Meadow Edge subdivision and Lynn Haven subdivision.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Supervisor Lofton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up for citizen comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to the minutes of the special meeting, January 12th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval. It's submitted.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the special meeting, January 12th, 2015, are approved. Now the special meeting, January 13th, 2015.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the special meeting, January 13th, 2015, are approved. Next is a special presentation. Vice Chairman DeHaven will accompany me. I could have Lorraine Mossberg join us.
The Employee of the Month Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Lorraine Mossberg for consideration as Employee of the Month for January 2015. Lorraine serves as an administrative assistant for the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. Lorraine is being recognized for acquainting herself with all commission of the Revenue Division processes, which has enabled her to know information she provides to the public firsthand. Lorraine takes on much responsibility by concentrating on assisting taxpayers with specific questions and processing the information in a concise, uniform manner to accommodate the taxpayer in a timely manner. She works tirelessly to inspire offices to participate in programs that raise money for community efforts. Her creativity is enjoyed by all. Lorraine is approachable and enthusiastic about her role in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, which makes for a learning and productive atmosphere. She is thorough and an excellent resource for coworkers to discuss new tasks. She continues to reach for creative ways to keep information fresh and informative. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Lorraine Mossberg as Employee of the Month for January 2015.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Hess. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Lorraine Mossberg is hereby recognized as Frederick County's Employee of the Month for January 2015. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to you for your outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes you continued success in future endeavors. Thank you so much.
Board of Zoning Appeals, do we have anything, Mr. Riley?
I'm sorry, still looking. That's back Greek, right?
Is that back Greek? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need help, or you've got some?
No, I've got a couple leads.
Good. Historic Resources Advisory Board, Red Bud?
Yes, sir.
Need help?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it.
Good.
In regards to committee appointments, you have the latest appointee to the Transportation Committee. I think you've got a copy of it. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated January 15th, 2015, to authorize the treasurer to refund Quantum Fireworks LLC the amount of $2,564.78 for business license taxes in 2014. This refund resulted from the taxpayer closing this business. The Commissioner verified that documentation and details for this refund meet all requirements pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. County Attorney hereby notes its consent to the proposed action. The Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the refund and the supplemental appropriation.
Do we have a motion by Supervisor Hess to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated January 15th, 2015, to authorize the treasurer to refund Rider Truck Rental LT the amount of $3,419.73 for proration of personal property taxes in 2013 and 14. This refund was a result of prorated personal property taxes and one license fee in the normal course of business. The Commissioner verified that documentation and details for this refund meet all requirements pursuant to the provisions of Title 58.1, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. County Attorney hereby notes its consent. The Board of Supervisors will also need to act on the request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Questions, Mr. Riley? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the refund plus the supplemental appropriation.
Do we have a motion by Supervisor Lofton? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Mr. Riley, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, next is the Finance Committee reports. Vice Chairman DeHaven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met on Wednesday, the 21st of January, 2015, 8:00 a.m. Items number 3A through E were approved under the consent agenda, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion to put items 3A through E on consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number two is the Fire and Rescue Chief requested general fund supplemental appropriation the amount of $5,700. The amount represents proceeds from a sale of surplus and needed for equipment for new vehicles. Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number four is the Sheriff requested general fund supplemental appropriation the amount of $9,000. This amount represents overtime funding approved by the U.S. Department of Justice, Organized Crime Drug Force Task Force. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number five, the Committee delayed action, awaiting additional information. Here's item number six, the Finance Director requested general fund supplemental appropriation the amount of $20,487.99. The amount represents unspent fiscal year 14 VJCCCA funds to be returned to the state. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Item number seven, the County Administrator requested refinance of the bonds for the public safety building animal shelter through the Virginia Resources Authority pooled financing program. Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, item number eight, the County Administrator requested approval of a reimbursement resolution declaring the county's intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more financing for certain cost of joint capital improvements for the courts and related services. The Committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Do we have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Please my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next is the Planning Commission business. Is a discussion on the Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment 01-14 Blaine Properties Sewer and Water Service Area. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, this is a discussion item, so we're looking for your input and ultimately direction if you feel it's appropriate to move on to a public hearing. This is a request that we received last summer as part of our comprehensive policy plan amendment process. Following some discussions we had in July, we did proceed with the study. This property is about 100 acres in size. It's two parcels, and it's located in the Stonewall Industrial District. Give you a little orientation on our map. Interstate 81 is just to the east there, so we're just south of Cedar Hill Road. And let's zoom out a little bit, so it's just north of the Hopewell Road area, so you can get a sense where it is. The green line that you see on the screen, my little drawling here, the green line, which is in that area, that's your existing sewer and water service area, so you can see, comes over here, and the request is to bump it out to include those properties. These properties are currently designated with commercial and industrial land use from a previous land use study we did a number of years ago. You can see it's industrial on the west parcel, and it's commercial on the east. It's not zoned, it's just planned for industrial in the future. But when we adopted those land uses, we did not move the sewer and water service area to encompass those properties, and that's what today's request is, to consider removing sewer and water service area. So what's being proposed is a change to the sewer and water service area boundary to include approximately 140 acres in the vicinity of the Blaine properties. The actual Blaine property is about 99 acres, but the Committee felt that if you're going to move the sewer and water service area, you ought to square it up a little bit, and I'll show you in a minute, but that's how you get to the 140-acre addition. As you can see, let's see, we'll do the drawl again. The shaded area in the green, the bright green is your new Swazza boundary that's being proposed, and just below it, you have shaded areas. You've got the two properties in question, and you've got a little bit of, I believe it's the Klein Farm that's being included also, as well as the north part of the Open Door Baptist Church site. So that's your 140-acre area. The Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee endorsed this at their November meeting with the language that I'll share with you. They suggest the minor adjustments to the map, so it's not just the 99-acre Blaine, it's 140 acres to square up the Swazza. And they also have some suggestive language that should go into the comprehensive plan. And you can read it, but essentially it says, if you're going to move the boundary, it doesn't , you still have to go through the rezoning, you'll still have to deal with transportation in the future. That's essentially what the language is trying to capture. The exact location of land use since in road can be worked out as part of a rezoning in the future. With that said, the Planning Commission discussed this amendment back in December. They felt it was worthy of taken through the public hearing process. There is recognition that we may have limited water and sewer capabilities in this area, but it was pointed out that as part of a rezoning exercise, the applicant is in a position where he has to show whether there's capacities to accommodate him, what he's going to do to assist that, and also what he's going to do to implement the transportation components. So with that said, I'd be looking for any discussion and ultimately look for direction to go public hearing if you feel it's appropriate.
House clean matter first.
Okay.
Is there any chance you put the same map in here twice?
Um...
There were two maps, the best of my ability, they looked the same.
I think one of them-
Maybe I missed something.
Let's see. Yeah, there's two in there twice.
Okay. Makes me feel a little better. I really searched over those two maps to figure out what the difference was.
What it is, is one of them has the green shading on it, so it shows the new and the old Swazza.
Ah, okay. Gotcha.
That's, 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 actually, these are the same maps. That has the green shading on it, that does not, and there's your other map, that shows the original Swazza.
I missed it. Okay, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, the land that we're looking to potentially include into the Swazza, is it currently zoned RA?
Yes.
Will including that, will expanding the Swazza area open up that land for any other uses with water and sewer service included in a Swazza? Will we, does he have to rezone it in order to take advantage of the Swazza?
Well, he has, the RA land, RA zone land has RA entitlements, correct.
But he wouldn't necessarily have water and sewer service available to that land.
Correct. So if you move the water, if you move the sewer and water service line, that's, that's a provision that says you could potentially use water and sewer, but the RA uses probably don't warrant the expense that you would have to entail to get the water and sewer to the property? And the RA uses that are acceptable in the RA zoning district?
When familiar with that, the soil composition in that area, and I just wondered if it could be opened up for residential development with use of the water and sewer, because it wasn't...
We've actually never had the rural preservation, the five-acre lots on water and sewer. It does, I'm not, I'm not going to speak to whether it's prohibited or not, but it's been cost prohibitive that people haven't wanted to go there.
Okay.
And cause for it to be commercial?
Yeah, I understand that.
And obviously, when you move the sewer and water service area, you're suggesting that we've got some designated industrial, commercial land uses. The sewer and water service area entitles you to ask for water and sewer, but you still have to go through the rezoning process and through your impact mitigation justify how you're going to address transportation, how, how the water and sewer service is going to serve your properties before you would secure the rezoning.
Expansion of the Swazza area does not mandate that that be rezoned, although it would be common sense that it would be rezoned because of the higher use.
I'd be all.
Okay.
Would it be possible to, to catalog the Swazza-designated properties that are not currently served by the Sanitation Authority and ask them for an annual update if anything had changed?
Certainly. We can do that.
Think it would be good communication between they and us. Oftentimes, there's no, no change, but...
We can do that. We did have, we included in your package a letter from the Sanitation Authority, and what we can do is touch base with them and try to see if we can expand on that letter. Areas in the county that are land use planned but outside the Swazza, areas that are in the Swazza but not developed yet, we can try to work with them to get it.
I kind of think that it was once upon a time a directive that if, if we expanded the Swazza, we wanted them to step up the pace on the, on the ways in which water and sewer could be provided.
Correct.
But we don't have a mechanism to find out if there was any progress made.
Understand. We'll look into that.
Any other questions? All right, what's your pleasure? I think they're looking for direction as to whether this is ready for public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to forward it to public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to forward to public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Thanks, sir. Next is a discussion on the Capital Improvements Plan. Are you going to do that one?
I'm going to do that one also.
All right.
Again, this is a discussion item. We're seeking some direction if you feel it's appropriate to take through the public hearing process. This is a draft, so we're still, we're still working on some of the language, but I can tell you that what's in your package as far as the table, the values and the projected years, and the comprehensive policy plans, the comprehensive policy plan committee's suggestion that it appears to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, that, that is in good shape. Every year about this time, we present the Draft CIP to the county. What this is, is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies, and ultimately, this comprehensive plan needs to be in conformance with the comfor, with this capital improvement plan needs to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and is ultimately adopted as a component of the comp plan every year. As I go through this, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but we also do have some representatives from the agencies in the audience. I did earlier, unless they're still here. Yes, we do. So if we have some questions, I'll defer to them. This draft was, work was created by the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee, and they endorsed it previously back in the fall. They found that the draft is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and therefore, we're taking it through the discussion process with the ultimate goal of taking it through a public hearing. The Planning Commission did review this as a discussion item, and they felt, we'll tweak on some of the, work on some of the language, which project descriptions, but the overall is in good shape for starting the public hearing process. What we're looking at this year is we have 88 projects on this plan. You can see on the screen, we had 92 last year, we had 86 the year before, so it's in the same general ballpark. And the plan does continue to reinforce the connection between the CIP, the comprehensive plan, and ultimately rezonings that we see. To zoom in, it's the same schedule you see every year, but a quick glance, you've, the way it's organized is every agency has their prioritized projects. We do not prioritize one agency against another. We simply have brought all the information together. And what you can see here is, in this example, is the school boards, these are their priorities, the top being the elementary school, and essentially, you can see, it's their, that's their pursuit right now. Wish they, they would like to have it funded this year. Overall, you can see that we've got a number of school projects, Parks and Rec projects, library, transportation, Winchester Airport, consistent with what we typically bring together. This is not a funding document, this is truly a planning document. We use it in the comprehensive plan, and we also use it as part of our rezoning process to, if we can try to mitigate impacts. This gives us guidance as to what those impact values might be. The plan has the annual map, so you can see where in the county those particular capital improvement projects are to be located, so we've updated all that information. Moving forward, you will notice that a couple things have been removed from the plan from previous years. The Frederick County Middle School has been removed because it's under construction. The airport has removed their parcel acquisition because they're in the, they're in the process of acquiring the parcel. And we have the Round Hill Station has been removed because it's under construction. Some of the new projects that we've included is the Joint Judicial Center renovation or new facility, the Parks and Rec, they have a pool complex renovation, they have their Snowden Bridge Park development, which was on the Profferd site just north of Snowden Bridge Residential Community, and they have a revised indoor aquatic center. Schools also included a Dow J. Howard Center addition. The Park Public Works included a Clearbrook City Convenience Center site. The airport has some, their new terminal vision over the next five years, so they've included that. This is presented as a discussion item. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have representatives from Parks and Rec if you have questions for them, and ultimately, we're, we're seeking your guidance to take it to public hearing if you feel it's appropriate.
Questions? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Lawrence, if I understand this correctly, this CIP projects list is not a particular endorsement of any project, but just an acknowledgement of this is what the different departments say there's their priorities or their projects they would like to present, move forward.
It's, and it's, and take one step further, it's also, we want to make sure that if we have capital projects, that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's a state law. So this is part of this, conforming with the state law requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hess?
Mr. Lawrence, I find the chart to be very helpful. It really lays out everything, but one thing, and you and I had a brief discussion about this, is identifying changes from the previous year. Sometimes it's a matter of trying to match pages and see where it has slipped. Is there any way you can provide something in that chart that identifies what has changed? I know some of them aren't the amounts or the projects, it's just where they appear in, in terms of fiscal year, and sometimes there are other things. I know the chart can only contain so much information, but...
We could, I, I don't know if it belongs in the, in the adopted document, but we could try to assemble that and make it part of your memo or your, your public hearing notification, so you're, at a glance, you can see what the changes are. We don't, I'd be hesitant about putting a project into the CIP that we don't want in the CIP anymore because it's been completed, but I think we can do some notations in there to, to recognize if the description has been changed over the year.
Yeah, well, some of them are existing projects that remain there. One of them I had noted was one of the proposed fire and rescue stations had changed either priority or what year it was being proposed for, and sometimes it takes a little bit to ferret that out.
Our staff's looking for some direction. Is it ready for public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward the plan for public hearing.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Off to public hearing. Next is a resolution on revenue sharing application modification. Mr. Rowley, is that you, or Mr. Bishop? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You previously acted on this resolution in December. However, due to VDOT requirements, we had to make some modifications to the application since they disallowed part of what we were applying for. Previously, we were applying for $10 million in state funds to be leveraged by $10 million in local dollars, which we use private dollars in that. We part, we, we find private partners for these projects. However, the Hagerty project was disallowed by VDOT, as well as a portion of the Coverstone Drive project. So what you have before you is an updated resolution that now applies for $2 million toward the Coverstone Drive project, which, if you look on the map to your left, you can't see the difference too well, unfortunately, on that screen between the green and the blue, but the four-lane road is split in half, a green section and a blue section. We were allowed to apply for the Phase 2, which is the green from existing Coverstone Drive down to where you see the full section going red, and we're further allowed to apply for the improvements to Route 50 itself at the intersection, so signalization upgrades, turn lane improvements, and that sort of thing, once the, whomever develops that property puts in that red segment. Valley Mill Road, I apologize, go ahead.
What's a short version on what VDOT disallowed or want it changed, and whatever you were told was the rationale?
What I was told is the rationale is that in their determination, which I should note is not based on modeling, it's based on a few folks down at the local assistance office looking at a map and the current traffic counts, that it would not divert enough traffic. That's a quote, "would not divert enough traffic." This is not-
To handle more traffic?
No, this was a compromise that they were, they were initially saying you can't apply for Coverstone Drive at all. This is a, this was the compromise that they came back and offered after we had been contacting Randy Kaiser and just about whoever else we could think of to contact, such as our CTB member, to try and keep this project alive.
I gathered that, but it was not abundantly clear to me what the compromise, the two things it's between. Was it, was it the amount of traffic it could handle or couldn't handle? Was it too big to be in the classification that qualified? It wasn't abundantly clear to me what was compromised. You have less lanes or more lanes?
Less lanes. We were allowed to apply for less.
So why would VDOT be interested in less lanes than more lanes?
That's a good question, sir, that I don't have the answer to.
Okay. Do you think it was overall dollar amount?
The, the core of the issue is that VDOT got way more applications than they have funds toward the revenue sharing program.
So if you wanted to be considered, you needed to downsize?
They were looking for places to cut. That's what happened here, that's what happened to Hagerty Boulevard. Valley Mill Road was left alone. So that remains in the application in its previous state. Hagerty went away, this one came down to $2 million.
Smaller, it can stay alive for a while.
Basically, yes.
I got you. I understand. Thanks. It just wasn't clear to me.
I understand.
Thank you. You can go ahead now. Is there another question on Hagerty? Okay, go ahead.
This map just illustrates Valley Mill Road, which, the realignment, which as I noted, that one wasn't messed with, that has not changed. The $2.6 million that's being requested is the same as in the original application. VDOT did not cut that down at all. The end game is that we were previously applying for $10 million in state funds, we are now applying for $4.6 million in state funds. The plan remains to leverage that with private dollars as opposed to county dollars to get those projects moving forward and done.
This, I'm sorry, I may. This reduced amount that we're going to apply for, does that affect us in future applications? In other words, are we telling them we'll, we'll take less if that's what it takes to get a project, or does that not make any, have any future impact on other projects?
I don't believe it has future impact, except in perhaps the sense that we may choose to apply for the rest of this project in a future application, whereas we may have been going for something else. That's a decision to make, be made down the road. It's always disappointing when you're not allowed to apply for the maximum that the program says you can apply for.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop, recall when, on the, we had business item sometime last year on the realignment of Valley Mill. I thought there was some other route that led that proposed ramp for 37 and Valley Mill to, to be aligned, and it certainly doesn't appear that way here, or is my mistaken, is my memory incorrect on that?
The, the existing Valley Mill Road, when the 37, 30% plans or whatever the actual percentage of plans that were drawn back in the early 90s were done, does align with, basically, when they drew those, they set up those ramps to align with existing Valley Mill Road. However, as our planning and development has gone forward in the ensuing 20 years, it's made a lot of sense to get Valley Mill realigned over here, away from the historic bridge and that farm and that substandard intersection, and as 37 develops, to adjust those ramps to meet this new intersection.
Okay, so that ramp in all likelihood would not be where it's shown on this map?
That's correct. We would expect it to move to the new Valley Mill location. That's even how the intersection's being planned and designed.
Other questions? I think you're seeking approval of the applications?
Yes, sir.
What's your pleasure?
I'd move that we endorse the amended application.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The resolution is approved. All right, we're down to Board Liaison Reports, are there any? All right, hearing none. Citizen comments, this is a portion of meeting the Board sets aside for comments from the citizenry. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Board on any topic? If so, please come forward. Give your name, magistrate or district, limit your comments to three minutes, please. All right, seeing no one. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? All right, if Supervisor DeHaven, would you assist me? Mr. Rowley, would you join me? Is this one so far? We finally got him, folks. I present to the Board of Representatives- Whereas John R. Rowley Jr. served the citizens of Frederick County in exemplary manner for 32 years as county administrator from January 1983 through February 1, 2015. Whereas John R. Rowley Jr. has the distinction of being the third longest-tenured county administrator in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And John R. Rowley has served in many other capacities within the community and his profession, including former president of Jameswood Athletic Association, 4-H, the Center of Board Directors, Board Directors' Special Love Programs for Children with Cancer, Chairman of the Virginia Association of Counties Risk Board, Virginia Local Government Managers Association. Whereas during his tenure as county administrator, John R. Rowley Jr. oversaw numerous regional projects to include construction of the first direct supervision regional adult detention centers in the Commonwealth of Virginia, creation of a state-of-the-art landfill facility, relocation and construction of a joint city-county wastewater treatment plant and the Winchester Regional Airport. Whereas John R. Rowley held for his strong relationship with the Frederick County School Board, which has been crucial to address educational needs during challenging economic times. Whereas John R. Rowley Jr. was a tireless worker for all the citizens of Frederick County. Whereas the Board will always consider John R. Rowley a colleague and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the Frederick County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to John R. Rowley Jr. and wishes him all the best in his future endeavor. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the accomplishments of his public service. I present this for approval.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I think we have a unanimous motion to approve. Mr. Rowley, thank you. That also was a vote. Thank you, Phil. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, finally, Brad is, we didn't get your personal point of view, the historic resource.
I know.
Now, are there, or bore any Board of Supervisors comments?
Chairman, maybe we adjourn.